Of August the 20th, we have a lovely crowd here tonight. I'm sure there are even more lovelier at home watching. Special thanks to our Chief of Police Lori Smith for being here. We feel totally secure tonight. Thank you very much. Your other guys do a great job, but we're glad you're here too. I think we'll start out by asking our town clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Goss, here.
Here.
Town number zero.
Here.
Town number eight.
Here.
Town number nine.
Here.
Town number 10.
Here.
Thank you, and it's my pleasure tonight to have the honor of leading the Pledge of
Allegiance and then the invocation. So if you will, please stand and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the invocation, I think I'll just share my thought for the day. People ask me all the time, what was one of the biggest surprises about this mayor's job? And clearly, it was how many of us agree on so many things so much of the time. There's a whole lot more consistency, a whole lot of things that we have in common, more than meets the eye. My dad, for example, he was the world's most positive person. He saw every glass as half full, every dark cloud have a silver lining. He was always looking for the positive. And I think if we can do the same thing in every interaction with our neighbors, our family, our friends, our coworkers, look for the things that unite us, look for the things that we have in common. There's hundreds and hundreds of things that we all believe the same way and believe in common. Don't focus on the 10 things that divide us. Focus on the thousand things that unite us. Look for the positive, look for that silver lining. Be like my dad, be positive. That's my thought for the day. And we'll move right along to petitions and comments, and I read the little disclaimer every time, it's important. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on a subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I'll ask the town clerk, if anyone has signed up, to speak in this part. Okay, well, we'll move right along. And the first order of business is to adopt our agenda. Our council members have had this and looked over the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that's unanimous. And we do have a presentation tonight, and we're going to ask Mr. Beck to come up and make the announcement, the presentation, and a little introduction, if you will.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. It's my privilege tonight to introduce you to our new Assistant Finance Director for the town, Mr. Tyler Harmon. Tyler has been working with us now for about five weeks. And I'll give you a little bit of background about him and let him make a few comments as well. Tyler is North Carolina native, grew up in the mountains of North Carolina, and he has a bachelor's degree from NC State and a master's in accounting from Carolina. He is a state fan though, so don't have to worry about that. But Tyler's a CPA. He's been a CPA in North Carolina for six years. He came to the town from a CPA firm in Cary where he did a lot of his work in municipal auditing. So he's kind of seen the books from the other side, on the audit side, and now he's decided to pursue local government. And really fortunate to have him, I think his skill set's gonna really benefit the town. And I think he's got a bright future in local government ahead of him. So really excited to have him on board and excited to be able to introduce him to you tonight. And I'll see if he has a few brief remarks to make as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm really happy to be here and look forward to learning this side of local government. Like David said, I've done municipal auditing for the past six years, so I've seen the workings from that side, but not delved into the inner workings. So it'd be interesting to learn that and, you know, hopefully use my knowledge to help David out as much as I can.
Excellent. So glad to have you on board, and you're working for one of the best right there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Are we in good financial shape? We okay? Checkbook's good?
We are, yep.
All right, thank you.
We're working hard on things.
Wanted to double check, thank you. I knew there were checks left, I didn't know if there was any money left. That's good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we have the consent agenda. There's about a half dozen items here that we've looked at and thought about, and usually we just roll them on through. But I think there was one we thought we might have a little further discussion or enlightenment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, poll number one, just to ask questions, no opposition, just to get some information from staff. I had contacted them earlier. So I'm moving to approve items two through six on the consent agenda.
Suck it.
Okay, well, before we take a vote on it, I did, I want to do exactly what you said. And I was listening to my chief parliamentarian, and it told me that we might be able to just chat about it and then leave it in the consent agenda. But whatever most we want to address, I think is worth talking about. Ms. Miller, do you have an input on the best way to do this?
Sure, I think you could do it either way. My recommendation would be to ask any questions you may have of the item and about the project, just to get an update. And then if council's comfortable, you can then approve the consent agenda as presented. And our public work, our Parks and Recreation Director is here to be able to answer any questions that council may have.
Does she have, does she have a slide we can look at?
I believe she does.
Woo-hoo!
So I withdraw my previous motion. Mr. Matthews withdraw the second and ask some questions now, okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation that we're about to see, Maria.
Sure. Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Just a quick... So just a quick reminder of the location of this project. This is South Garner Greenway. This is an overall map, and this is the multi-use path that we propose to build along Buffalo Road connecting the Vandora Springs Circle all the way back to Lake Benson and White Deer Park. And again, there's a lot of development in this part of town. There's a lot of existing neighborhoods. So this will provide a really interesting and very, hopefully, very well-used amenity to the community. So a bit of a project timeline. I'm not going to go through the entire calendar for how the project has evolved. Just bring it to your attention, the blue arrow where we are. We have received a contract from Campo for funding of about $2.67 million. It's transportation dollars, so this is a little bit outside of parks. But it is, again, funding that has been used in many other jurisdictions to support the development of Greenways and multi-use paths. And we are sort of on target to have our design consultant provide our 65% design sometime in November. And sometime, I just don't have the exact date. But it is before the break. So I think one question that has been posed to us is the timeline for lab funding. One of the requirements of the grants is that the project be construction-ready by the fall of 2025. And because this is transportation dollars, it does add some timing to the project design, and that is additional reviews that will reestimate approximately four to six months will be added to the design phase. Now, the unknown of this project that could add more time is really the acquisition of easements of right-of-way, which will be necessary to complete the path. And that could be anywhere from six to 18 months. I don't know that we have a sort of a very specific answer to that question of timing for right-of-way acquisitions, because that has so many factors that depend on who owns the land, appraisals, so on and so forth. We also have had in this project some really significant design challenges. I don't know that we have all the answers yet. That's why we're at 65% design. Stormwater and the Lake Benson conservation overlay and the requirements for how to treat stormwater have been a complicated issue. There's also quite a bit of utility lines below grade, water, sewer, a bit of everything. The right-of-way on Buffalo Road is not quite straight. It's variable, so the width varies, which is making design a bit complicated. It's a state road, so we will have to, whatever change we do has to meet NCDOT standards, and it has to go through their approval process. And then we do have some additional federal funding requirements that I mentioned earlier. And then we will also likely have some right-of-way acquisition escalating costs, because as you know, real estate values have increased quite a bit. So that's kind of some of the factors that are impacting this project.
Okay, nice question. So is this construction-ready by fall to 2025? But looking at some of these, particularly the easements from right-of-way acquisition, you know, that's gonna be a hard, that's gonna be hard to do. So how do we overcome that challenge? Because I know the right-of-way acquisitions that Ms. Jones had to deal with, with the roundabout, and also utility relocations, that was, that took as long as anything, utility relocations. And I know the issues that came up with the sidewalk on Buffalo Road, on the part they got the sidewalk, were many utility issues. So how's, tell me the magic that's gonna happen, have it ready by fall of 2025?
So even though we don't have the final design, we have started to have conversations with some of the utilities that would be impacted for this project to sort of lay, this is, this is the challenge that we have. What can we do to make, to work together? So we've started conversations even before we have gotten to the design point where we know exactly what we will need. Because I think, you know, again, we start talking about this early, we know the problem, we're not surprising anyone. So that's one thing that, again, we have started. The other thing that we can do, even though it's not necessarily optimal thing to do, we can start talking land acquisition at 65%, which will mean we can start this year to start talking to property owners. The final design could change between 65 and 100% construction documents. So we might end up buying land that we may not need, highly unlikely. But, but again, that is, again, another strategy that we can use to try to minimize the time that it'll take to deal with property acquisitions. It is sort of the, I think that's the toughest part of this project. Creative engineers can figure out a solution for stormwater handling. We can figure out the utilities. I think when it comes to acquiring individual property owners, that I think it's the toughest part of any project.
And if I may, this may be one of the first projects that we're gonna use our outside property acquisition consultant to work on, so that will help expedite that process. And this, again, about a year ago, we had the first community meeting with impacted property owners, so this should not be a surprise to anyone. The engineering department's done a lot of outreach and talked to people that we, or the property owners that we potentially feel are impacted by this project. But as soon as we get the 65% plans, we'll, we'll start the acquisition phase. We've also learned a lot of lessons from the White Oak Roundabout, and we now have a better understanding with Duke Energy as to what they anticipate for the easements. So there was some delay in that project because the first set of easements that we acquired were not acceptable to them. And then there was also a glitch with the plan review. So I think engineering, you know, we've learned some tough lessons from that project that we're able to learn from and go forward to help streamline the acquisition and design process for this project.
Okay, so another question, and you may not be able to answer this, is that when construction starts, do they have an estimate of the time period, timeframe that it may take? 12 months, 15, 18?
They do. There, any one second. It's something like 250 days of construction, which is a very odd number, but yeah, that is what we have been advised.
Okay, so a little less than nine months. Okay, all right. That's a couple of questions I had, and others have questions, please ask.
Just a comment, and this project, I'll go ahead and say it's near and dear to my heart, because all those people live over there in the Lakemore, and even across the road at Buffalo Grove on that side, they've been really waiting for this a long, long time. And to be able to get out there and walk all the way up to Lake Benson, not get their life in hands trying to cross that bridge over there and that curve. And fortunately, nobody to my knowledge has got killed there yet, but you take your life in your own hands. But this is gonna be a fantastic thing, Maria, and I appreciate what you've done on it. And when we had the meeting at White Deer Park, the attendance was really strong, of people coming out and seeing, and seeing the big picture. Past, when you cross over Old Stage Road, that's gonna eventually go down Swift Creek all the way up to Lake Wheeler. That's gonna be one heck of a nice pathway. It'll really expand what we're trying to do over here. So I just wanna commend you and the engineering department, and you've got a good record going for you, so I expect nothing less. So just keep on keeping on. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And I think, if I may, Mayor, this is a project that the engineering department's doing a lot of the heavy lifting. So I wanna make sure that you know that while we're certainly talking to you tonight, this is, again, their expertise and their heavy lifting is really Lisa and Lee and Jacqueline and the team from engineering.
And Mr. Matthews told me that since he has a corner lot there, and he gets to Buffalo Road, he'll sign anything you want over there.
All right.
Yeah, that's one property you got taken care of.
We're good to go. I got, we've got that uncovered.
Thank you.
He'll do everything except grab a shovel. Hang on just a second. Any other questions or comments from us here?
No questions. Wonderful thing, long time coming, and we're happy to see it.
Just a quick question on the intersection of, sort of an extension of this intersection of Vandora Springs and Old Stage. And there are improvements there that are tied to that townhome project that's had significant delays. You probably don't know the answer to this question. But I'm curious as to what the timeline is for that intersection's improvements, and then tying into, you know, this, and then kind of thinking about with the disruption of that intersection plus the greenway construction. So does anyone have an update on the timing of the improvements of that intersection and when that is supposed to happen?
I do not have an update. I do think the Greenway project will stop a little bit short of the intersection because there's existing sidewalk there, but I don't have an update on the intersection improvements. We'll get that and pass it along to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you so much. That's very informative, and thank you for breaking this one out, Gray. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, miss. I mean, we know that because you get the lab funding, there's more hoops staff has to jump through, and it takes the project a little bit longer. So, but, you know, the fact that it's gotta be construction-ready in, you know, 15 months or so, that gets it moving along.
Good. Well, thank you for bringing up the questions and asking us to look at it. Thanks for your answers. I think this is very important information for all of our citizens to get a glimpse of what goes into doing this. You don't just go out there and start paving and pouring concrete. It takes months and months of planning. There's a lot to it. Your staff and the engineering staff do a superior job at doing this all the time. And not just all about me, but I love this project. This will open, my bicycle rides up to five more subdivisions that I can ride through and check on everything in the town without getting on a dangerous road. So this is a great, great thing from my point of view. And if there's no more questions on this, we'll let it be in the consent agenda. And you have looked over the rest of them. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moon, yes. And with that in mind, we, I think you've looked it over. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Mr. Matthews to accept the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And now we move along to a little more serious matter, a public hearing. And again, we read a very specialized disclaimer here. This case involves an application for a special use permit, which requires a quasi-judicial hearing. This is a very small percentage of the hearings that we do. We handle it in a very special way. And in this particular case, council is reopening the public hearing that was held on May 11th of 2024 to reconsider the decision that was made that evening. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, had any ex parte communications, any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome of the case. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts of property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to the case or any information received outside of the hearing or after the previous hearing that was disclosed at that point. The property was considered at a prior council meeting in conjunction with the original special use permit approval on August 18th, 2015, and a modification denied on May 21st, 2024. Council members discussed the appeal that was filed with the town attorney and town managers during the closed sessions on July 30th, 2024, and on August 6th, 2024. Do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communications since our last meeting? Nothing to talk about there. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk. Is there anyone to be sworn in on this particular hearing?
Mr. Mayor, no one's signed up to speak, but representatives of the applicant are here to answer questions, should you have them, and we can swear them in at that time.
Okay, well, we may move ahead. If we have a question, we'll stop and go back with the applicant's representatives. Okay, so the staff report that's offered as evidence in the case, it will be accepted into the record unless objection erased by the applicant or other person. And we'll, at this point, we'll recognize Mr. Joseph Linsky on our planning staff to give us a little update on this and refresh our memory of where we are and what we're doing.
We will need to swear, Mr. Linsky in.
Okay, we have someone to be sworn in? Okay, our presenter must be sworn in. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Mr. Linsky.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This will be very brief, since I are all familiar with this case, and you kind of touched on some of the updates here. But this is for SUP SP 1505 M 2301 Creech Road Solar. Reiterating, again, here the applicant and owner's Dogwood Creek Land Holdings LLC. This is a modification to the original special use permit to reduce the size of the property that the SUP would apply to. So a bit of that update again, the original public hearing, when it was denied, was May 21st. The denial order was delivered to the applicant on June 7th. The application for CZMP 2212 Dan Dixon Townhomes was formally withdrawn on the 27th of June. The applicant appealed the decision with the Wake County Superior Court on July 8th, and council held the closed session on July 30th with direction to rehear, and then public notices were mailed out on August 8th. Again, the zoning context here, it's a RA district, and it is primarily residential around it with MFA, R4, and RA. And the, as you stated, the original approval was back from 2015 for the special use permit. Again, here's the site. Nothing here's been changed or altered. The acreage is all still the same. It's a 22.78 acres that would be transferred. And they'd have to come in and have an exempt plat after this for, to subdivide that land off. And no buildings proposed, and all the solar farm panels would stay the same. Again, here are the two requirements, if they were to be approved, two conditions of And lastly, I'll direct you to the motion sheet in your, in your staff report there. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask the council members if there's any questions. We had quite a bit of discussion previously, but there's always room for another question. Any questions, comments on this one? Okay, thank you. And again, just to rephrase a little bit of what you just said, again, the request was made by the applicant to reduce the SUP application. And it was a little confusing to us, perhaps, last time. There was also a zoning request in the works that related to that. But that zoning request has been withdrawn, so this time we're not confused what are we approving. We're approving just the change in the SUP. Any change in the zoning will be a separate issue with separate testimony, separate information brought, and a totally separate decision made. So in other words, this doesn't really change what can be done with that tract as far as zoning goes. That will be a future decision.
That's correct.
Am I restating that correctly?
That is correct. And we haven't had any pre-application meetings or any submitted for that property.
Okay, right. And then we would treat like, treat that like any other zoning request, with study, review, public hearings, all of those things, if that comes along.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make that clear. Having said that, I will close the public hearing at this point, and I'll ask council members for a motion and a second related to this.
Having received the verification from the Technical Review Committee that the original eight conditions of the town council approval of SUP SP 1505 continue to be met, I move the town council approve SUP SP 1505 M 2301 Creech Road Solar with two new site-specific conditions recommended by the TRC that will apply to the revised area and that will be listed on the amendment permit that will be prepared by staff. This action reverses the decision made on May 21st, 2025. This action reverses the decision made on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, and is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. So we have a motion and a second to approve this request, and since this is a semi-judicial hearing, quasi-judicial, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote on this, just for clarity on the record. Mr. Matthews, aye or nay?
Aye.
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 Hearing five ayes, clearly that passes. Thank you, Mr. Linsky. That was great information. That, that passes, and that closes out the quasi-judicial hearing on that issue. Thank you very much. Moving right along on our agenda, we have some new and old business. I'm not aware of any. Does anybody, and then newer old? Moving right along to committee reports, I'll now recognize each council member in turn. If you want to report on the committee that you're assigned to, we'll start with Mr. Matthews. Any report, any committee report?
Nothing is time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
Yes, sir, I do have one report out in liaison to the Garner Red Foundation, and they are making plans for their football game on Thursday, September twentieth with, between Garner Magnet High School and South Garner High School. There's a lot of excitement that activities, I believe, will start at five o'clock. You'll be hearing more, but this is a traditional game every year, and a lot of community pride involved, so make sure that we can attend if possible.
Garner versus Garner. May Garner win. Mr. Downer?
I think tonight, sir.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, I'd like to mention that the, the next Affordable Housing Task Force meeting will be held on this coming Monday, August twenty-second, from three to five P M. in the upstairs training room.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the committee reports, and I believe we have a manager report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have your monthly Talk of the Town report, and I'll ask Mr. Hodges to go over the highlights of that report. So, Mr. Hodges?
All right, thanks, Ms. Miller. Couple of items we wanted to follow up with you all on. At a previous meeting, Mr. Dillinger had asked about utility work that was being done along Vandoor Springs from Timber towards Buffalo Road. That work was being done by AT&amp;T as an installation of new utilities there. Our staff, while we don't have permits, we don't manage the permits there for a DOT road, our staff has been engaged to ensure that the conditions were returned back, because that area, as you know, was a site of a public project, and so it is in our interest to make sure that the utility provider is returning those back to the conditions that we left our public project in that is along the frontage of those homeowners. So if anyone has any reports of anything or observes anything there, we'd appreciate hearing back from that. It's not only your report, but Mr. Dillinger also mentioned some stoplight functionality issues at that intersection of Timber and Vandoor Springs that same night, and asked us to just monitor that situation. We did check in to make sure that that light has been returned to what we think is fairly normal timing. Also, Ms. Harrison wanted me to pass along that that intersection is a part of a signal project, that is a pilot project, that's gonna be trying to synchronize all of the Timber Drive signals better, and so that work, once we know more about when that work will be undertaken, we'll let you know. If you observe any issues with the signal, please let us know. I haven't observed any that I think were causing the traffic to have a specific delay or, or unique pattern, but if you observe anything, let us know. Mr. Vance mentioned the Affordable Housing Task Force. Related to that, we want to make sure that council had the link to the housing webpage or pages that staff has put together. This was an effort to pull together all of the resources that the town already provides, things that we provide directly, or information that we provide out from our partner organizations, and in planning around the Housing Task Force being formed, there was recognition that while we had some of those things, they were not always easy for people to find, and we're not grouped together. So if you've not had a chance to take a look at those, please follow the link, and we can send that directly to you for the housing pages. If you observe something there that you feel like you've got a question about or have a suggestion for, it is a work in progress, and we're continuing to make some modifications to that as we receive feedback from the task force members, as well as some of our partner agencies who help us with the topic of housing programming. Want to mention tonight the GFOA award, so congratulations to our finance team for their receiving this award. This is the thirty-fourth consecutive year that the town has received this award, so congratulations to the finance team for a very long track record of exceptional financial reporting. There are a number of events listed on your Talk of the Town report. I'll draw your attention to one in particular. The Try and Station Groundbreaking will be held Friday morning. That is a project that the town is a partner in, along with Wake County, to provide the financing for that. It's very exciting that we're having that groundbreaking right around the time of our Affordable Housing Task Force really beginning its work. So if you have any questions about any of the, the items on the, the calendar here, let us know. On the second page of your report are some statistics from the monthly analytics from the Garner Info App. One of the things that I wanted to, to share with you, as I mentioned last time, that we had a lower number of Tall Grass reports, like, for example, this month only shows four reports. I was reminded by our co-compliance staff after reporting that, that part of the reason that you're seeing such a low number there is the proactive stance that our staff has taken this past year in tackling those before they need to get turned in by anyone. And so I wanted to pass along, on behalf of Mr. Pageant and his team, they ran some numbers for us from April first through July thirty-first, so the most recent four months. Our co-compliance team responded to four-hundred-and-ninety-five complaint cases. Three-hundred-and-ninety-four of those were related to Tall Grass. So there are quite a number of things that you're not seeing on the, the Garner Info App, and it's due to the proactivity that staff is taking, so these get handled before they ever need to get turned in to the Garner Info App. Also, just wanted to mention that this month's report also does show a larger number of items that are received but don't have a status update. We have taken note of that, and we're working with some of our newer staff in some areas where we've had transitions in staff to make sure that everyone is fully aware of, of the, and trained on how to go in and update those cases as progress is happening. So many of those have updates out to the citizens who turned them in, but we just had not updated the status of those. So we've taken note of that, and just wanted to pass along that those are being taken care of as well. And if there's any questions about the report, I'd be happy to answer it for you tonight.
Okay.
That's all that I have to share with reports. Mr. Hodges, thank you for reviewing the Talk of the Town. We're happy to answer any additional questions that council may have this evening.
Seems like we got good communication going on every day. And we also have attorney reports, Ms. Jones?
No report tonight, but we will be discussing the code of conduct and ethics at our work session next week.
Excellent, thanks for everybody's hard work on that. Now we get back to council reports, does a council member want to provide a report on anything that was not specifically their, their, their committee activity? We'll start with Mr. Vance, Mr. Dillinger, Ms. Behringer, Mr. Singleton?
To talk about Tall Grass, I, I know that there was an email address that I got corrected today, I thought it was nuisance@ganarnc.gov, but Ms. Miller helped me realize this. NOV, Notice of Violation@ganarnc.com, and I hadn't gotten it, yes, Garner NC. Yeah, I got it in my phone now, so I sent it to the wrong place. Anyway, I turned two in today and got a quick update on those and staff. I was already sent a babe in on one today and sent a notice of violation to another yesterday, so they're on top of it. There's two business locations that are very prominently seen on Highway seventy and Highway four oh one, and it's called Acting Fast. I appreciate it.
And so you say you entered this through the Garner Info App?
I entered one through the Garner Info App through the, over the weekend, and they sent the notice yesterday, but I followed up with an email today because I didn't know if I had the address right, so I made sure, and they're already on top of it.
Great, so there's many ways for our citizens to, to let the staff know about issues, everything from junk cars to Tall Grass to code violations, trash pickups, all of those things. We're really promoting this Garner Info App as a way to get your concern on the record twenty-four seven, and they're getting quick response, and I've seen a lot of action.
And this, one of these I turned in on four oh one has a business, the same business in Wilson, and it's had the same issues, it's still at Oak after six months, right in a prominent place. I don't know what the problem is, what their issues are, but it looks, it looked a lot worse than ours at one time. I can't believe they didn't get it, get in there. Somebody, I reckon, they, they believe in cutting grass or not over there. But anyway, that's their business, but the same business was doing the same thing in another town, so that's, uh, it's not good, in my opinion, for that business, but that's their choice.
But we had the ability to work with it and help correct the situation.
Our staff has followed up and gotten the information to the right people. They will follow up.
Excellent, yeah, because if we don't take pride in our town, if our citizens don't take pride in the town, what are we gonna do? We gotta preserve what we've got, keep it clean and neat and above average before we start adding more stuff. So let's do that. Our staff does a great job of responding to these, but they cannot be everywhere all the time. So some combination of council members, volunteers, citizens, keep those, these concerns to us, and we'll do our best to deal with them. Thank you very much. Mr. Matthews?
Um, just, I want to think, and I think I assured you said earlier, but just as the public works out at the park, since we are a Purple Heart community, which is an outstanding thing to be and support our veterans of military, that the, what we call the bypass around the namestones is done, if put to the crush and run in the rain, is packing down, and a lot of people are asking about it, and starting to use it now, and, which is great. And when I was out there, Public Works was putting us up a brand-new American flag because the other looked like it was at Fort Henry after the hurricanes, it was in shreds, so they got a brand-new flag out there, and I'm sure they professionally disposed of it, but we appreciate the support from our Public Works, especially our Veterans Memorial and all that goes on. That is sacred ground, as I like to call it, and they did a great job, so looking forward to seeing that completed with the signage and all. And that's all I got, sir.
Excellent, thank you very much for your attention there. And I'm, we have a closed session on here, but I don't think we, we have a closed session scheduled, so that pretty well completes this evening's business, unless there's anything else going on here. With that being said, then I may ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ms. Behringer moves, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews, second. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? And you can stay as long as you want if you vote against it, but we're leaving. So thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.